We have everybody, right? Thumbs up, yeah, got everybody. Fantastic. We didn't leave anybody in the parking lot. My name is Joyce Wolf. I didn't say this the first time. I'm actually chairman, chairperson of the Board of Directors of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, and that's why they let me do this, because, you know, not just because they let me. So we're gonna go ahead and get rolling here. Tonight's forum is, of course, sponsored by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce and the Salina Legal Women Voters. And this session will feature the Salina City Commission candidates. Again, if you weren't here early for the earlier session, we do have printed bios of all the candidates in the back. You can also find the information on the chamber's website and also the Legal Women Voters website as well at the county clerk's office and the Salina Public Library, so we made every effort to make sure you could get the information. So I'm going to actually introduce our candidates at this time. There are three open seats for the Salina City Commission, and I'm gonna start at the end. John Blanchard. James Bowden. Is it Bowden or Bowden?
It's Bowden.
It's Bowden. Alright, thanks. I did clarify that earlier. Trent Davis. Rod Franz. Ben Frueh, and Carl Ryan. And I will introduce my friend Margaret Wyatt from the Legal Women Voters. She does the rules. Mark?
Okay, here are the rules. We'll start with one-minute opening remarks by the candidate. I will moderate. Oh, yes. Joyce is taller than me, I gotta pull it down, I forget. One-minute opening remarks by the candidates, which I will moderate, and the candidates will alternate answering questions. After that, jurors will moderate the media panel, who will ask questions. Again, the answers will be one minute long. And I will moderate written questions from the audience. There are tablets or little pads and pencils on the chairs, so if you have questions you would like to answer, or you would like answers to from city commission candidates, put them on the pad, raise your hand, so that the people who are collecting the questions can see that you have a question, and then they will pick them up. Please have your questions pertain to all the candidates. Candidates will have one minute to answer questions, and following that, there will be one minute of closing remarks. So we'll do the questions until 8:50. Joyce will do the media questions until 8:10, and I want to introduce the timekeepers, who will make sure that the answers are no more than a minute. So, the first forty seconds, you'll see a green card. The next twenty seconds, you'll see a yellow card, and then at the end, when it's over, you'll see a red card, and you hear a little beep, and the timekeepers will say stop. So, let's start. Are there any questions? Let's start with the opening remarks. John Blanchard.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is John Blanchard, and I'm running for city commission to provide experienced leadership in crafting policies focused on long-term economic stability, quality neighborhoods, and an attractive, resilient, and physically sustainable community. I believe that city government needs to get back to the basics, which is to provide essential and necessary public services efficiently and effectively. I served on the city commission from April 2013 to January 2018. I had a perfect attendance record, and I was always well-prepared. I have the courage of my convictions, and I am willing to take on difficult and unpopular tasks. My professional planning experience of over thirty years allows me with a unique ability to fully understand the planning and zoning process, and to advocate for fair, effective, and productive land use policies that lead to physical sustainability and resiliency. I'd like to thank you all for being here this evening. James Bowden.
I'm James Bowden. In order to have well-balanced decision-making, we have to have a diversity of perspectives involved. There are many underrepresented groups within this community, including young people. We, as the underrepresented, have to step up and get involved, so that we can be involved in the decision-making process that's happening in the city. I'm from Salina. I have a farming background. I graduated with a chemistry degree from Bethany College, and I traveled abroad with Peace Corps in Panama. I think with my local knowledge and my global perspective, I can contribute something unique to the Salina City Commission.
Trent Davis.
Ten-year dreams, but only two-year terms. All candidates have a wish list to come after from the first day in office, but time moves quickly. Two days and more issues come to the city commission than we initiate ourselves. We must allow for diverse opinions to be heard and rational debate to occur. As a commissioner, I am sensitive to both sides of the discussion, for example, the landlord and the tenant, employer and employee, store owner and consumer, hotelier and the traveler, dog owners and dog victims, Mustangs and Cougars might take out. I offer reason and responsibility to city commission proceedings. As Salina works hard to remain the premier city in Kansas, I prefer a long-range approach to current issues and offer an educated, positive, constructive, and inclusive method of governance. Thank you.
Rod Franz.
Good evening. I'm Rod Franz. I was finance director for the city of Salina from 1996 to 2016. Before moving to Salina, I held a similar position in Arkansas City. I currently volunteer in the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission, the friends of the local animal shelter. Previously, I've been a volunteer Boy Scout leader, merit badge counselor, and Salina South Band Booster. As city commissioner, I will set aside preconceived ideas and listen objectively to all sides of the issue. I will encourage civil conversations. I respect and value citizen input. I'm committed to open and accountable government and quality services that will set Salina apart as a community of choice. It is important to remain positive about Salina and focus on moving forward.
Ben Frueh.
Hello. I'm Ben Frueh. I've been a lifelong resident of Salina. I'm married with four stepdaughters, ages eighteen, sixteen, fifteen, and twelve. I'm a second-generation resident. Both of my grandfathers were Salina businessmen. One grandfather was partners engaged in plumbing and heating. My other grandfather owned and operated Prue's East Iron Chapel. My parents also had a small business, ran it out of the garage called Prue's Stained Glass. I've been a route delivery driver for air gas for the past two years, covering northwest, north-central, northeast Kansas, and south-central La Crosse. Prior to that, I worked construction in both residential and commercial fields. I'm running for city commission because I want to show people in the city that anyone can run for office and help change their community. I would like to see younger individuals become more involved and feel like their voices are heard on city matters, making it more transparent. Thank you.
Carl Ryan.
Hi, I'm Carl Ryan. I'm a stockholder and a funeral director for the Ryan Mortuary. We are a four-generation family in the business of one of the few hundred-year-old businesses in Salina. There've been three generations in my family before me, and I enjoyed two generations afterwards. I have degrees in business administration and mortuary science, and I'm a taxpayer, homeowner, and raise six children. Governing for me is being open and fair, communication, partnering, continuing to invest in ourselves, and remembering that even though we're a great city in the center of Kansas, we're a town of only fifty thousand, and there are things that are beyond the reach of our grasp. I believe we are best, we value and serve people, and I expect the municipal organization to provide the highest quality of service for the citizens of Salina. And if anyone's here that has a longer resume that includes forty years, I have those cameras for you after the meeting.
Joyce will now moderate the media questions. We're gonna actually start with Charles this time, because I got cut out the last session, so... And John, we'll start with you. Or, do you... James, do you want to start? I'll let Charles start. It'll help me keep track of that.
Okay. Just over a year ago, the city commission was found by the Kansas Attorney General's Office to have violated the Kansas Open Records Act. And just about a month ago, the same commission self-reported itself for a violation to that, to the office as well, of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. So if you're elected, what is your plan to address the issue of transparency in the city, and what steps would you take to ensure that incidents like this don't happen again?
Okay, yeah, there have been multiple violations, and I think one of the things that's missing is good oversight by the governing body to make sure that those things don't happen. One of the things that I think is really important is the culture of the organization. When you have a culture of secrecy, when you go into executive session, four times more than any other community in Kansas, and actually about ten times more often than the average of the ten largest communities, I think you have what could easily be considered a culture of secrecy. So I think one of the things that we need to do is we need to shift from a mindset of saying, you know, hey, what can we keep to ourselves, and what can we keep in the commission family, and what do we need to really fully disclose to the public? Transparency is very important. It maintains public trust, and I think we ought to err on the side of letting the people know how the city government operates, instead of keeping it in the commission family, as some have suggested in the past. Thank you.
James?
I agree with John that we need to pay attention to what needs to be disclosed and what should be open to the public. I think the current city commission did a good job responding to the issue. I think something we could do in the future is get more cora en coma training, so that all of the commissioners are up to date on what should be done in that situation.
Dr. Davis?
Lord knows, we try to follow the rules. There are lots of rules, and it's hard to keep track of them all. A lot of times when we're in executive session, we can't tell you what we're discussing, or we wouldn't need to go into executive session, or we wouldn't have privileged information. In putting together the downtown project, there are a lot of contractual details, which by their nature are considered privileged information. We put in some, and to effect some procedures now that we think will significantly reduce the likelihood of there being any further violations. Education is very important. Just because you get elected doesn't mean you automatically know all the rules. This is a learning thing, the whole time. But certainly, we're operating from the position of wanting to be as open as we can.
Rod?
I think it's very important to be open and accountable, to have open public records, to have open public meetings. I think the commission this time has tried to respond, and now have a section on the agenda where the mayor asks the clerk if proper notice is given. That's a nice check. You know, I will say, and I've done this before, if I go into an executive session and it's not a proper topic, I will walk out. It is simply that important to me. You know, a number of years ago, the Kansas Press Association conducted a sting operation, and I didn't know we were targeted until well after the fact. The fact is, they came into our office, they asked some of the people up front for some information, and they said they were asked a few questions to determine what specific information it was that they needed, and they got it. And I was extraordinarily proud of that, I didn't have to intervene, it simply happened because we had the resources in place.
Ben?
I think education, and from what I hear out on the streets, the commission working together, and then just the city manager being truthful about them.
Well, certainly transparency is important, and I think the city commission always has that in mind when it's trying to be transparent. We have made mistakes, the staff has made mistakes, but, you know, occasionally you have little things, you know, fire people for... We've all forgot to hit the send button on an email, and you know, fire people for that. So I think that additional training is warranted, and it's something we need to be mindful and vigilant, vigilant all the time.
Leslie?
Should there be more public-private projects to keep the costs down for taxpayers or make these cities' dollars go farther? And can you give an example of that that would benefit Salina that has not yet been done?
I do think we should have more public-private partnerships. Those are something that private investors can get behind and invest in their community. Something that has not been done yet is connecting more the trail system within Salina, making sure that we can connect to the upcoming river project and make that go throughout the city, and connect all the residents.
Public-private partnerships are wonderful for saving public dollars on the initial investment, but the cost of maintenance of the facility or project will fall on the city. So we always have to make sure that we have funds to maintain whatever that project is. The area we have the greatest promise and opportunity in Salina is gonna be for childcare and early childhood education. There's not enough valuable and productive childcare. Workers aren't gonna come here, or workers will be staying at home, because it's less expensive to not work and take care of the kids than to pay childcare. So I think that's the next frontier here in Salina, to get a citywide, community-wide collaboration of businesses and employees to further childhood education.
I think public-private partnerships have a dark side, and if I might use an example, if you go to a store with a friend and you get a seat coat, and your friend offers to pay half of it, and you buy the coat, but you don't need a coat, you just spent half of that money for nothing. So you need to make sure that when you get offered a public-private partnership, that it's something the community needs. And I would agree with Trent, that one of the potentials is childcare and partnering with some of the agencies in that business to try to provide a more affordable and more accessible system, because it is an important ancillary issue to economic development. To have workers, we have to be able to take care of their kids.
Private-public partnerships. I'm a guy that kind of does things on my own, so I don't know really where I stand on that. There's some examples of baseball and so forth like that. If it can benefit this community, then I would look at it, but I'm kind of a standalone guy, so that's how I am.
Well, public-private partnerships, and Salina has thrived on those, in my experience. It's a community attribute that's the envy of cities all across the city, the state of Kansas. They do come with a dark side, and it's kind of like being on your church board and somebody gives you a beat-up old car, what do you do with that? There are some ideas that can come that just don't make sense, but often they come, and they are a surprise. We heard about baseball enterprises, we heard about tennis, and those were both surprises to me this year, but many things can make a lot of sense. I echo the commissioners and the candidates' remarks about childcare education. I was both on the early Head Start, and our Head Start councils when my children were little, on psych council at Oakdale School, and I realized the importance of the early education. So I think there are partnerships, there are avenues out there available to help with the childcare initiative for younger-aged children. Okay, you know, we talk an awful lot about public-private partnerships, but we talk about them in terms of projects or initiatives or so on. Most communities are talking about public-private partnerships and how they're beginning to deliver services, and that is because municipal budgets are under strain from the enormous amounts of taxation and debt that has been taken out of the state, and the federal level has trickled down to the local level. One way that we haven't used private-public partnerships, while back when we formed the Economic Development Organization, we had a group in here, the International Economic Development Council, and they came in and they suggested a forty-sixty private-public or public-private partnership in funding economic development. The city puts in three hundred, close to three hundred thousand dollars a year in overlapping funding from the entities, public entities. I think we need to make economic development a public-private partnership.
Tom?
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for having the courage to put your name on the ballot and run for city commission. You will make decisions that impact my everyday life and my pocketbook more than any decision at the state level or the national level, so thank you for having the courage to run. My question is, I've been at the radio station for twenty-five years. Before that, I was born and raised in Salina. Seems to me, at least for the last twenty-five years, we've been spinning our wheels with our population, forty-five thousand-ish, give or take several thousand either way. What can we do to grow our population and get over the fifty thousand hump?
Person by person, piece by piece, we're gonna grow the city. Tomorrow, we are welcoming officially one vision to Salina. It's sort of a home run as far as economic development is concerned, but if we realize five hundred jobs, that's probably close to two thousand people. I think we lose more young people than we should. Young people need to go away, explore the world, but when they're ready to raise the families, this should be their community of choice. We're in rural Kansas, we're in the center of the plains. If you look on the internet and TV, the action is in Dixie, East Coast, and every place, so we're not unique in that regard. But I think what you see going on downtown is the beginning of an entertainment and economic engine which will be very attractive to younger people.
You know, it's a tough question, as Trent said, there's been a trend in western Kansas for population decline since at least the nineteen-fifties, and part of that is large economic issues, changes in agribusiness, and so on. As far as what we can do about Salina, by the way, has escaped most of that. We've grown very slowly until the last couple of years, and it's kind of leveled out. You know, we really need to focus on attracting jobs to the community that pay well, well remedied away. I think we need to focus on figuring out what services attract people to the community and provide those, and I think that the growth will follow from those two items. I think we do need to be careful about not getting too exuberant about growth, because rapid growth brings its own sorts of issues. I don't think we're in immediate danger of that, but we need to keep that on our head.
Industry, more industrial jobs for families. One thing for me, having teenage daughters at home, they get bored, and that's stuff for a lot more teenagers to do. Paying a lot for these kids to do, and other than play Xbox and do what they do inside the home, or go out in the streets and get in trouble. And that's one thing I hear from a lot of the community members, is stuff for kids.
Well, there've been a number of good comments there. It is a step-by-step process, and we are bucking a little bit of the trend of this part of Kansas and northwestern Kansas, but I think we have put a lot of things in place. Downtown is a big push for that, the medical school is that, Westland's enrollment is rising, and they're giving half-price scholarships to their members of their church. Our UAS schools are full, K-Tech is putting everybody into jobs. We're making those steps little by little, and that's what's important. I think we could work harder on the retention part. I know that kids need to go out and find their way. I did the same thing, but when my parents offered me a chance to come back to Salina, I realized it was Salina that had nurtured me, it had been my schools, my teachers, my neighborhood, my family, and my YMCA that had brought me back here, and we can do the same. The reality is, is that rural life is a real thing, okay? Small towns are losing their young populations at an alarming rate, so we need to look at more creative ways and say, what are the ways that are right in front of us that we don't choose to go after? I'm gonna tell you one thing. From 2010 till now, the Hispanic and Latino population has grown from ten point two percent to twelve point one percent. It's the fastest growing, it's the only growing demographic that we have. We need to be committed as a community to be more welcoming, and really go out and maybe recruit legal immigration, okay? We're not gonna get to fifty thousand probably ever, but we need to be the strongest, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight thousand we can possibly be. Since 2010, our population has actually declined one point eight percent. So when we talk about this growth, we need to really look at it in realistic terms, that we need to do things that make us more resilient.
We have to consider not only attracting population and/or young people, but keeping the young people that we have here. Everybody needs to get an education and get out and explore the world, but we want them to feel welcome in our community as it is, and the two things that young people look for are first, jobs, and that's gonna bring people in, and the second thing is culture. What kind of engaging community culture can they get involved with? Are there... Do they have the ability to form long-lasting relationships and be, feel prosperous within this community?
So what's the current... So what's the current city policy or ordinance that you would like to see you change or revise? Rod?
I'm afraid of that. I did not begin running with any specific agenda in mind. When you say city policy, I will say this. City commission, every year, has a strategic planning meeting, and for the last hundred years or so, they've used a particular format. They changed that this year. And I will have to say that I was always dissatisfied with the old format. I'm not sure I like the new format much better. So I think that is something we need to address and maybe change our focus in that one bit, but that will take a discussion among all of the members of the commission.
Current ordinance, my big thing is panhandling. Forty-two years of my life in this city, and I've never seen panhandling the way it's been the last five years, and it's just, it's out of control. I think it's a safety factor for the kids that run, the kids that are on the streets of this town, kids can't even go outside and play, because they don't know who these individuals are, they just appear. That does create, goes into homelessness as well, and those people need help. There's mental issues that involve in homelessness, drug addiction, but I think we definitely need to look at our panhandling ordinance and think about what Wichita has done or other surrounding communities.
There's lots of things out there, to me, that you're interested in, I'm interested in, that maybe aren't practical from this task point, viewpoint, vaping and bags and full recycling, but I think probably the thing that comes to mind most is I'd like us to get the automation of our trash hauling put into place. Every time I see those young people running behind those trash trucks, and it strikes me that it's the most dangerous job that we've got in the city, that we need to move on the automation portion of their refuse service. Tom? First of all, it's not really what ordinances I'd like to change, it's what ordinances the people want to have changed. And so people come to us all the time and ask, you know, hey, can we look at this ordinance and so on. So a few of those that people have come in and talked to about, I think that we need to give them a fair hearing and listen to them, and sift the pros and cons out. First is the pit bull ban. We've had a group that's really wanted to have a decision made on that, and it keep being put off, so I think that needs to be taken care of. I think something that could be done without an ordinance is simple resolution, and that is change our meeting times from four o'clock in the afternoon to six o'clock in the afternoon, and then start there and get more representation, and maybe even change it to two meetings a month instead of four. And I'm running out of time, but I would like to change the charter ordinance and start talking about the change from a commission manager form of government to a council manager, mayor form of government, that will provide for district and at-large representation, so that we more adequately represent people in neighborhoods across the community.
I think we need to be more accessible as the city commission to the people at large and the people that we want to see in the meetings. Having meetings at four o'clock does not cater to people... Having meetings at four o'clock does not cater to people that have nine-to-five jobs and we need to make sure they're involved in that process. I think if we maximize our social media usage by communicating with them before and after the meeting and some of the results from that meeting, that will also help. I'd also like to encourage the creation of a sustainability and a community resilience board that would focus on issues like plastic bags and other environmental issues within
I like that last idea a lot. It's time for us to identify ourselves as being in favor of prolonging the existence of this planet or not reducing our energy footprint. I think what I would want to do, it should be easy, is our enforcement of our property maintenance codes. We could beautify a lot of the city and I think increase property values if we just made homeowners adhere to the rules we already have. And if we need to come up with creative ways to give them assistance, we should look into ways of doing that. In our new housing developments, I'd like us to adhere to our policy of connectivity, make sure we have enough parkland, neighborhood parks, just simple things we just need to, if we already have on the books, we just need to enforce.
Thank you. I'll see. And this will be our last question.
If you were elected and serving on the city commission and the commission was approached by a group of citizens who wanted something done for the community, they had a lot of support from the community, but it was something that you were personally opposed to, what would you do?
Sit down, let's talk. The people that put you in that position, so ultimately that's what you want to do is listen to, you know, just listen.
Well, for me, I think the proper process would be to bring that to my fellow commissioners. Anything that we can act on, we need to discuss, put on the agenda, have the whole community give its input and then, you know, take our temperature about whether that's an idea that's worth moving forward on. So, I appreciate all comments that come to me and I sound those off of our city manager, but it's really for the commission to discuss before it gets a movement, before the community.
I would do the job that was expected of me, and that is, if I had a predetermined outcome, I would step away and recuse myself because I had a conflict. It would be the same answer if they came and I was super supportive of it and I somehow would benefit from it personally or financially, I would step away from that conflict of interest. So, part of the job of being a city commissioner is to be able to go into a project or a situation and not prejudge it. Get all the facts and then make your determination based on good quality information, input on the project that is reliable, and also through careful deliberation with your fellow commissioners. And hopefully you would come up to a good consensus and if the project has merit, it will move forward.
I think we need to consider the power of and. What this project is and what my views probably do have some compatibility in some way, so we need to think about how we can both move forward with the project that the people want, but also take into considerations the other side of the issue and why there are other perspectives that are against it.
I think it's kind of ridiculous to think that any of us don't have a personal opinion on just about any topic that comes up. We may have a strong conviction or it may be, well, I could go either way, but we usually have an opinion. I have already voted on a few occasions for something that was better for the city than what I would have done if I ruled the world. For me, it's city over self. I have a moral line passed which I won't go, but hope everyone up here does as well. And if I'm not gonna vote for something on a moral reason, I would raise that issue. But if we have effective communication, we can reach that common ground, that middle ground. But my job is to listen to both sides and make the best decision.
I think one of the most important characteristics that you have to have as an elected official is to set yourself aside and look at things from a community perspective. I'm basically agreeing with everybody else, all right? I mean, you have to step outside of yourself and consider what's best for the community. And I've done that on any number of occasions. I've done things I personally would probably never have done for myself. If the cause is something the community wanted, there was obviously lots of interest in it and overall it appeared it would be good for the community, I've done that. A recent example is the baseball proposal. I don't play baseball, my kids don't play baseball, I'm not interested in baseball. But clearly, it's a community need that a lot of people have a lot of interest in and I think it would be good for the community and so I am inclined to support that proposal.
Thank you. I want to thank our meeting panelists because now we're gonna launch into the fun audience questions. Are you ready, Ms. Margaret?
I am.
All right.
I believe Carl is first.
Working with the county commission, how would you move forward with the Expo Center, Project Equestrian Improvements, and River Development?
Well, we've engaged in some good conversations with the county in the last year and I'm glad we moved forward from that. You know, it wasn't that long ago, we were in court with them over the boundary road issues, so I'm glad that we have two willing commissioners that are willing to speak about things now. My only interest in the negotiation we have for the expo lease is just aesthetic related and I would like what they do over there to both blend in with the area that the river will encompass and also see them do it in a reasonably timely manner so that the river work in that area could be five years, seven years out, but the improvements that they're proposing come in a reasonably short amount of time, not over a thirty-year period.
Well, the Expo Center, first of all, I'd like to thank Bob Richardson, the chairman and county commissioner for being here. I think we got a good county commission. I went off the board in January of two thousand eighteen and I think it was a time where five city commissioners, five county commissioners, all were able to get along. I think that we didn't agree on everything, but we still got along well. And my feeling on the Expo Center itself is that eighty-five percent of the county is the city, so it's the same people and the same dollars for the most part. I think we need to find a solution that works for both entities, recognizing that the county has budget issues too. They have very serious challenges. We have challenges. We have a criminal justice center that we're really needing to take a serious look at. So, there are serious items on the table and they have serious budget implications. I don't want to make them do things that if the fair is dead five years from now, that we feel like we gotta hold out to something because we put six million dollars into it.
I'm coming from a rural background and on a state level, we're losing attendance to the state fair and so that's something that concerns me. I'm really glad that Salina has an equestrian show that's chosen us as their primary venue. I think that we need to take that into consideration because that's gonna bring a lot of people here. And we also need to consider that the collaboration between T-Peg and the county is possible and could be successful.
I have a lot to learn coming from a city background about what you do in all these barns and stables and everything, but I've been educated and the Expo Center not only brings in outside visitors, but those buildings are used a lot for social events and people here in town. So, it is a vital part of our community. We do want it to fit in with the river, which is not gonna be hard to do. I think we're actually closer than what you might expect and you have two groups of legal representation and administration and they have to meet and get together and discuss the ideas and meet again. It takes time. I guess you could lock a ton of us in a room, tell us we couldn't come out until we had an agreement and if that wasn't breaking any rules, we could probably do it that way. I'll ask the chair after the meeting.
You know, I think we need to recognize that the city and county, even though we occupy the same building, we do have different viewpoints. We take a different perspective on things. And one is the issue of aesthetics versus function at the Expo Center. As I understand, the primary difference now has to do with whether or not the existing utilities get buried as a part of the project or not, and it has to do with how long it's going to take to construct the facility. I think they are pretty much on the same page with respect to the length of the lease. And my take on that, you know, is, and all, maybe I shouldn't do this, but I'll throw it out there, is I'm perfectly willing to have the city buried if it can get out over a long period of time. I think that's a fair trade.
I'm gonna agree with what James said. It's pretty huge and when you look at the track record where it comes from and how it's got to here, there's a lot of people worldwide that's gonna come to this thing. This thing's huge. It can be a good economic impact to the community and hopefully it continues around for a long time. As far as the city-county or the city and the county relationship goes, I'd like to see something come along. I don't really pay much attention to the county because I'm in the city, so hopefully something can come together.
Next question. Now that we have spent over a year in millions of taxpayer dollars renovating the downtown, what is your plan to bring Salina alive?
Well, the plan to bring Salina alive, I assume that you're saying how do we get people here? Well, the Field House was supposed to do that, but it's actually underperforming and people in. We're looking at the Salina Downtown Inc. is supposed to provide entertainment, maintenance, and enforcement, security. So, they're pretty much gonna be working on that. I think that we've got a lot of things around the community that people are interested in, so we need to get them focused into coming downtown. Hopefully, we can educate people on the parking and everything else so they're not intimidated. But we have to realize that people are gonna have to drive down here, so they need to know what's available, where it is, and how we do that. We need to do a much better job marketing that Field House because that is supposed to be the catalyst and the economic driver and it really has been underperforming, so I think if we give it a boost, then we're gonna need that.
I think what's gonna keep our downtown vibrant is community culture and if we don't have the culture, we're not gonna be able to sustain the downtown. We have these nice things and we have to get out there and dedicate ourselves to supporting them. One of the things that I really think brings people downtown is the arts and humanities. When you get bands out there and artists and things that create that culture, people want to be down there and I think that's what we need to do.
Heard two excellent ideas and you have to understand that not many people would probably willingly open a new business during the time the street in front of the business was torn up. So, I'm expecting some pent-up business to start appearing soon. Anyone who wants an opportunity to develop arts, entertainment, restaurant businesses, this is the time. Downtown is ripe. We're gonna increase the housing, so there'll be more people on the street. The Field House should grow over time, the alleys obviously gonna bring in tournaments and business. So, this should actually be a nice place. It's not gonna just convert overnight, you know, to ten thousand people on the side.
It's gonna take time. I heard from a lot of people who go to the Field House to see grandkids and so on and it is, and I'm not sure if underperforming is the right word, it may not yet be meeting expectations, but we still have time. With regard to the millions spent, I would have to point out that a good part of that money was put underground in utility lines that were close to a hundred years old and it was a high time that they be replaced, whether or not in conjunction with this project or not. I think we need to focus on arts and entertainment as, I think it was James talked about, about the arts downtown. You know, the Steeple Theater is an absolute anchor for the downtown area. I ran across a guy in Overland Park who not only knew about the Steeple, he knew about Martinelli's and that was his image of Salina. So, you know, it can be a real benefit to the community in terms of attracting people from outside the community to participate in our culture.
I would definitely say live music events, arts festivals. We've got the car show in the summertime, but just anything that we can get people to come out downtown and hang out and have fun.
Somebody grew up a block and a half from here and has lived his whole life in this area and I'd have been thrilled to see what's going on downtown. For the life of me, I think I'm already seeing the changes there. I think the mayor's right that nobody's gonna get too serious about investment while the sidewalks are torn up in front, but I think the progress is already evident and there's gonna be real growth there. We have the Lee Buildings that'll come online in a year, quite a number, fifty in the first phase, over a hundred residential units there. We've done all the right things to kickstart that downtown and I think it's obvious that
Okay. All of you will probably agree that affordable housing is important, but how does approving two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar housing developments time and time again create affordable housing?
I think if we're gonna use special assessments to invest in housing, we have to invest according to our housing plan that we already had on the books. And right now, the housing on the edge of town is not affordable for young people. It's not affordable for most people in Salina and we need to start thinking about what people can afford. Most people in this town don't have jobs that will support even a hundred-thousand-dollar house, so we have to be thinking about those people and where the investment goes in this
Housing becomes affordable in proportion to how much money you make. If your education will not ready you for a job that makes a salary of a certain type, then your housing choices are gonna be limited. Having said that, through, you know, no fault of their own, there are some people who are not gonna make certain amounts of money. We have to encourage our builders to build different types of housing that can be built at lower prices. We don't have the same incentives for downtown that we'd have in Greenfield. But remember also, most of these houses that are being built are being sold. There are people moving to Salina who can't afford these houses. I think we may have an income disparity in Salina, but you know, if we were to build ten one-million-dollar homes, that's great because that means there are probably ten people who brought new businesses in town. Not that we have to subsidize those, but you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars is not what it used to be.
You know, I think affordable housing has become a code word for something besides price point. I just happened to look at the housing market in Salina today on river.com. There's two-hundred-and-seventy houses available, a hundred-and-twenty of them list for less than a hundred thousand dollars. Sixty list from a hundred to a hundred-and-fifty, thirty-nine from a hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred and the rest are higher than that. So, sixty-seven percent of the houses on the market in Salina are available for less than a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. I think that affordable housing has come to be a code word, meaning the house I want, the size I want, with the fixtures and furnishings I want, in the neighborhood I want, you know. A lot of things come together and unfortunately, when you bring those things together, very often the price point does this. So, I think we need to be very careful about the way we approach this problem. Last question, I'm out of time, but rentals play a role too.
This is a deal... This is a deal I struggle with, because I really, I'll be honest, I really haven't paid much attention to it. I've been looking at other issues in the city, and there is a hole in the middle, and hopefully we can come to an agreement on that and get something settled, but I really ain't got anything on that.
Well, I think the real perspective should be that we are looking for a well-rounded housing market, that we have inventory all up and down the spectrum. And I think that the most traditional form of homeownership, you buy where you can afford, and you move up as your life progresses. I've lived in four different houses. I've downsized to the one I'm in. I'm ready to look for something smaller, probably. So when people move up, that creates openings below them. It's a testament to the higher housing market now, that it sells as fast as we can make it. So we really need to continue to support that area of housing. And then, like everything else in Salina, and the kind of community we are, we're gonna have to pick and choose our opportunities to increase housing in the other categories.
That's a great question, and the quick answer is, it doesn't, okay? Affordable housing is a function of income. And it's a function of what your income is in your community and what the cost of living and the cost of housing is. So when we say affordability, it's affordable to somebody, well, of course. But what we're talking about is that we have wages that are, Salina County is 37th in the state. We're in the low, we're not even in the top one-third of incomes. The answer to this question is the same as the one before it. If you want, people need to have disposable income, and they have to have incomes that they can go downtown and spend money. They need to have incomes that they can afford to save housing. Our rents went from $599 to $739 for gross rent, and we have over 50% of the people in this community that rent that spend more than 50% of their income on their housing expenses. If we want affordable housing, we need to get wages up.
Did you answer this? Oh, yeah, you started, Jane. Sorry. Okay, my next question. I was gonna give you another chance. This choice question goes first to Trent Davis. What will you do to reduce Salina's carbon footprint?
This would probably be what I could do if I ruled the world. I would, I think the easiest thing is to take advantage of the things that we have here. We get charged, which is sunlight and wind. I like the California footage, which is, I don't know how long it's gonna stay on the books, but require new housing to have solar panels. There's a lot of talk about, well, why should we be the first to do that? At some point, we're gonna have to be bold and innovative and be the first, be the first to get clean indoor air in our restaurants. There's no reason why we can't be the first to have the majority of our power come from free sources. But that'll take a true public-private partnership and the community effort. That's what we want our identity to be.
Small pieces. First thing we can do is get our recycling program in order. Currently, it is split between a curbside single-source pickup and a recycling center. The curbside program, I think, only serves about 600 households. We need to decide which we're gonna do. Personally, I like curbside, but I know it has lots of issues. So I'm willing to listen to any of you, but we need to get off the knife's edge and decide which way we're gonna go. And if we go to the recycling center, we need to do something to make sure that's encouraged to be used. The other thing I would say is I was disappointed in the plastic bag ban. While it may have been the right thing to do, I think we should have stepped forward and done something else by offering a carrot to encourage people to use reusable bags, even if we didn't require stores to provide reusable bags.
I would agree with Rod Frans said.
Yes, Rod, you had a good statement. And I would agree, you know, there are things that we can pick and choose. But in terms of making a statement, you gotta be careful about that, because again, if you overextend, you're gonna be looking at raising the mill levy to subsidize something that is just making a state here of a community. So you have to be very cautious about what you want to overextend to do.
Sorry, I'm gonna get my time right. You know, we talk a lot about recycling and plastic bag bans, but I think we're tripping over dollars, picking up pennies. I mean, the real thing is, since 1965, this community has grown land area-wise almost three times its size. That's 200% growth with a 9.1 population increase. If you really wanna make a bang and lower your carbon footprint, or however you wanna put it, build inside the town, infill and redevelopment. Let's quit building new streets in new suburbs out in Greenfield that we have fewer and fewer people that are around to support and to maintain. Our tax budgets in the future are going to explode because we have so much, we have 725 laymiles of street. We have probably $250 of deferred maintenance on street, water, and sewer line. We have $220 of overlapping debt. We're in debt nearly $500 million!
I'd like to go back to my sustainability and community resilience board. Between recycling, energy independence, plastic bags, there's a multitude of issues we have to deal with. And that's something that that advisory board can take into consideration. But what we really need to consider is that we can't expect somebody else to tell us how to reduce our carbon footprint. We have to make that personal choice to do it ourselves. And so we need to stop taking plastic bags from buildings, even though they offer them. We need to reduce our amount of driving, even though we can go clear across the state if we want to. It's a personal choice.
Okay, Rod Frans will start this question. Salina has many aging residential neighborhoods. How can the city support revitalizing them?
You know, I think that we do have some programs in place that do that. There's a tax rebate program that's affecting some neighborhoods. You know, the Salina Lives Plan identifies a couple of things that we might consider going, following. One of those is trying to identify, again, small areas in neighborhoods that are needy, I guess is the best way to say it, have issues with housing, aging, and target those for improvement. We have some private nonprofits that are getting into this. Toda comes to mind. Norse Line of Community Development, I know, is a neighborhood agency that is working in this way. So I think this is an area where public-private partnerships are, again, maybe have some potential.
Yeah, we definitely have some aging neighborhoods, some areas that haven't been touched probably in 40 years. Yeah, I would cite nonprofits or public private as well for that.
Well, I would echo the public-private ideas, and I would also look to enforcement of some of the codes we have for cleaning up some of the neighborhoods where we are rebuilding a number of the streets, trying to get into as many residential areas as possible. I think that has a direct impact on the people's feelings about the homes that they live in. I think we can look to the codes to change some things. Residential areas don't usually allow apartment complexes in them. We could reduce or expand the footprint that's allowed on a certain piece of property. Allow people that are, that want to go in to revitalize, to build deeper and higher, and therefore increase the density. So I think things like that could incentivize people to go into older and take over older homes and improve it.
We've already done some of the things that it takes to strengthen those neighborhoods. We just need to commit to them. We have a comprehensive plan that was passed in 2010 that said we need to prioritize infill and redevelopment. Yet what do we do to continue to incentivize Greenfield sprawl? It makes no sense whatsoever. Some people on the commission and elsewhere benefit financially extremely well from these things. They don't deal with their conflicts of interest very well, and it's hard as a governing body to get anything done when you're dealing with that kind of environment. But if we stop incentivizing the easy projects on greenfield development, we can start to bring people, more people back into the city core. We have a land bank, we have a property maintenance code, we have all the pieces we need to help restore these core communities that millennials and empty masters wanna live in. And we just need to commit ourselves to doing it and get the job done.
We need to create community improvement districts that incentivize improving the existing structures that are there. I think if we take whole blocks so that when we invest in these communities, the value comes up as a whole, not just one house, and you still have a house that is falling apart next to you. I think it's important to invest in a community as a whole. I also think it goes back to getting jobs here, getting people wages that they deserve so that they can afford to invest in these houses.
Where did I got to go last on this? Next to last. When you rebuild a neighborhood, you have to decide if you're rebuilding it for the current resident to remain there or if you are rebuilding it to make it more valuable, to bring in someone else who's gonna buy a house that's at a higher price. Big cities, the term obviously is gentrification. We have to decide if that's what's gonna happen to our neighborhoods, or are we gonna try to get current residents to shift from being renters to owners? If so, they're gonna need education on how to maintain a house, the property, maintenance codes. To come in and do our houses, we're gonna have to go block by block, probably moving out from downtown out to the center. But there has to be a profit for builders and rehab folks, and that takes a lot of money. So it's not gonna be a cheap process, but we have to determine what our purpose is first. Who are we trying to move down?
Should marijuana be decriminalized? Start with them.
You sure you wanna go me first? Man, that's a tough one. Drugs is a real big thing to me in this community. I think drugs in this community are at an all-time high. I don't think so, no.
Well, at this time, I'd say no, because it's one of those transitional things, and if you just legalize it, I think all of the systems that deal with that would be overwhelmed. So we're gonna have to take an approach to that on a step-by-step basis. Like we're seeing in many parts of the country, there's a lot of pressure on Kansas because we've got Colorado right next door to us. But we're still gonna have to move towards medical marijuana and other steps before we can legalize.
Well, that's a question for Senator Hardy and the campus legislature. So be sure that whoever wrote that question go and lobby him for that afterwards. I will, let me, so I'm really not gonna weigh in on that. I think there are, you know, I hear that people for tax purposes want it or whatever, but I'd be really interested in looking at what pediatricians and school board people and law enforcement and everything, what the implications may be before I just give an off-the-cup answer to something like that. I'm really pleased, though, that hemp is legalized, because I think we need to really exploit that from an agricultural perspective. And I think that we could do really great things, and also to give a plug to perennial agriculture. I think the Land Institute is something everybody ought to know about here, and I think it's something that we need to support with as a community.
Thanks for the shout-out, John. I think if you look at trends nationally, it is for legalization. I think what we need to consider is how many people are in our criminal justice system because of minor drug possession and other issues like that. So if we can keep them out of the criminal justice system by decriminalizing, I think that's a good idea.
Well, the me of 30 years ago, we never believed. It's getting to come out of my mind. But if you look at what our criminal justice systems have done, we have functionally decriminalized simple possession in small amounts anyway. And to continue to clog the court systems for something which we have absolutely no chance of turning around, I think is a big waste of money and resources. I would still wanna have limits on amounts intended to distribute. There's a difference between legalizing and decriminalizing. And those technical nuances, I'd be interested in discussing. I'm worried about that because I agree it's gonna happen at the state, it won't happen locally. But I'm certainly in a position where, at this ripe old age of 66, I could support that, could support that.
I gave Trent my script, so you can pay me later. You know, there is a difference between legalization and decriminalization, and it is absolutely true, I think, that if we continue to focus, and we may have stopped focusing, I don't know, on small amounts, we're gonna continue to clog the legal system up. We're gonna increase the need for more facilities to incarcerate people, which we're dealing with locally at the county level right now. So I think there is at least some argument for that. Now, that being said, I don't have enough good information for me to really have an informed opinion. These are things I've just kinda picked up from the news media. I know people who are in the drug abuse counseling business who absolutely believe it's a gateway drug, the worst drugs. I know people in counseling business who say it's not. So, you know, I'm kind of, I'm juggling here, so I don't really know. But I do agree with what Dr. Davis.
Okay, Carl Ryan will be first on this. What is your position on allowing developers to avoid making payments on special assessments by keeping vacant lots and development zoned as agricultural use?
Well, that is an exception that the law allows, and the law, as long as the law allows it, I'm fine with that. If, I don't think that's anything that we, at our level, can legislate. The exception for agricultural exception is in the law, and I think that's beyond our reach to administer. I think on the idea of specials and just dealing with development all the way across the board, they have a certain economic model that they work off of, which includes using exceptions, but also specials. They've been building their business around that model. If we're gonna change it, we'd be very cautious not to pull the rug out from under them. If we're gonna change assessment policy, it's something that needs to be backed off gradually or other changes that affect their model. Or we'll throw it into chaos, just as we have, and there'll be no mons, just as ever.
Well, I don't gain financially from real estate developers, so my answer is considerably different. I would be upset if I were all of you out there paying property tax. When you get a new lot put on it with streets and sewers and everything else, and you say, and it's a quarter of an acre, and you're saying that you're using it for agriculture because it's a loophole you can exploit, I think it's fraud, and it really is something where they're making use, subsidize their profits. They pay $4 a year for a $36,000 lot. They oughta be paying at least $750 a year for it. I don't have a problem with saying, if we're gonna do special assessments and we're gonna have a development agreement, let's make sure that the developer agrees to pay the vacant lot fee in order to get the special asses- the vacant lot fee in order to get the special assessments.
I think once the land is platted, it should have a timeline on when it should become taxed as a vacant lot. If these lands are actually being used for agriculture, then we need to continue letting them use them for agriculture. But again, if the developer's intention is to develop that land and platter it out, then there should be a timeline on when it should convert to a vacant lot tax.
This was the policy that needed to be revised and looked at, but I was afraid to mention that loud, but since it's come back to haunt us anyway. The special assessment system is not used in most states. It's an ingrained part of how housing in Kansas is financed. Some of that problem, a lot of that problem will have to be handled at the banking level, where the amount of loan percentage that would be given to the builders is established. I think it's reasonable to certainly convert the ag to a vacant lot, and that the intent of that land, certainly with streets and utilities in it, is to put a house, if someone came the next day and said, I want to build a house, that lot would be ready to be used. I think that's a reasonable trade-off.
Can you repeat the question? Carefully.
I set it aside, and now I am...
Okay, I will try anyway. I believe that the question conflates two issues. That is, when a developer develops lots and there are services provided to those lots, and those lots have not...
I found it.
Oh, okay.
What is your position on allowing developers to avoid making payments on special assessments by keeping vacant lots in development zoned as agricultural use?
Okay, it conflates two issues, and I'm not going to get through this in a minute. But when there's a development and there are lots planted and services provided, the special assessments apply. There is no ag deferral for special assessments in that situation. However, if the lots are vacant and they appear to be used for agriculture, a county appraisal will appraise them for regular tax purposes, that purposes as ag use. The special assessment deferral applies to property that is within a benefit district that is not yet subdivided into lots, but is thought to benefit from improvements to that district. And in that case, until it is subdivided, it will not pay specials for either the time it's subdivided or 15 years. So there's actually two issues working there that have been conflated in the question.
I will agree with John Blanchard.
I think this is our last question we have time for, and John will start. Northwest Arkansas is growing because of Walmart. Is there some business we can get to help Salina grow?
That's outside of my favor. I'm a planner, not a retail specialist. I think what we can do, we have to talk about taxes and the water fees. I think what we can do to be attractive to a large corporation is we need to keep our taxes down, we need to keep our fees down. Our water fee's gone up over 48%, our sewer fees have gone over 87%. The combined water and sewer fees over the past 10 years have gone up 65%. That is not attractive to any business, and really, any resident that wants to move here. Our property taxes over the last two years have gone up 17%. Five years prior to it, it went up 9.1%. We need to get our taxes and our water fees under control, or nobody's going to want to move their businesses here. So, hope that's helpful.
I'm not sure we should focus on getting businesses here, but investing in the businesses that we have here and helping them to expand into something that can employ more people in this town. I think we've got a lot of resources between HACA, K-State Extension, the Land Institute, all of which I would love to see expand, and I think they have the potential to do it as long as we can support them.
I would agree that we should focus on growing our smaller businesses and bigger businesses. Our bigger businesses will want smaller businesses. We're in the central plains. Not many people are going to move here for the water. They move here for space, wind, sun, transportation, a long runway, interstates, and if they ever come to visit, to be honest, we're the busiest, nicest, most sophisticated, smallest city in the great plains. So we need to attract those folks who would naturally gravitate towards what we already have and encourage them to grow those businesses.
I think we ought to focus on ourselves instead of comparing ourselves to others. Let's play to our assets, develop our possibilities. And I go back to my original question, how much growth, how fast growth is too much? I think it must grow greatly nice. I think we need to continue to focus on playing to Salina's assets and trying to recruit businesses that benefit from that. I think we do need to, as Trent and James both said, to focus on growing our existing businesses, and I think we need to provide services to people.
I'd like to focus on growing our existing businesses and also act, we've got a lot of ground around here, so focus on them.
Well, I don't think we should be exclusive about anything. Certainly, trying to grow those businesses that are here already and assist them makes perfect sense, but we've organized an EDO that is having some success at telling our story. And as Mayor Trent said, we have our certain group of assets here. Certainly, what we charge in the way of taxes and water fees, and all of those things across the border are in line with all of our peer cities in the same region. So we just have to tell their story a little better, and I think the EDO is well organized to do that for us.
Joyce will now moderate those remarks.
James, we're going to start. Oh, thank you for a lead.
I think there's going to be a lot of projects that we have to encounter on the City Commission, and I think the most important part of solving those problems is coming at it as a team and as a community, and looking for solutions that benefit the whole rather than any one part. So I would like to be one of those team players, and I encourage you to vote for me for City Commission.
The City Commission is the interface between the citizens of Salina and the municipal government. I can help Salina on its current journey. I'm Trent Davis, and I appreciate your vote from tomorrow until November 5th. Advanced voting has started. Thank you.
I believe I have the qualifications to be an effective City Commissioner for you based on my experience, education, and outlook. When I assumed the position of Finance Director in 1996, the property tax levy was 27.5 million. When I retired in 2016, it was 27.3 million. Increased base property valuations helped, but don't keep pace with inflation, with 20 years of inflationary pressure. During my tenure, the city expanded street maintenance substantially and partnered with OCCK on Citigo, built Kenwood Cove, and developed a major soccer complex. This was due to hard work of a dedicated staff team, of which I was a key member, and sound policy direction from the City Commission. I value transparency in government, citizen engagement, and quality services. I care about Salina now and about its future, and would appreciate your vote on November 5th, or tomorrow.
If elected, I look to forward, look forward to working with other commissioners on solving issues in Salina. We have a budget issue in Salina we need to fix, and we need to work on getting better paying jobs and ensure these employees are offered benefits. I would also like to work on a city ordinance for panhandling and work to clean up the streets of Salina. We need to focus on repairing and maintaining what we have in these parks as far as equipment, walking trails, and tennis courts, and we need to focus on street repairs in residential neighborhoods. Additionally, I would be interested in districting the city so we have more widespread representation of people. I would support moving City Commission meetings to 6:00 p.m. to allow more working individuals to attend to meetings and make the city government more transparent to the community. If it means we have to have a meeting on a Saturday, you get people to attend a Hot Topic, then that's what we need to do, but we need community involvement and input. We need accountability and to cut overspending. I would appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Valuing citizens is good governance. I want Salina to be a healthy, safe, vibrant community, a Salina that welcomes everyone and attracts new people to new and new generation. I'm focused on Salina's unique civic personality, and I represent fair and balanced reasoning toward solving problems. I will collaborate without dominating, and I will continue to exercise responsible financial planning. Salina should see herself as the regional city of choice, and to be this, we need to offer experiences and amenities that attract new people to Salina without needlessly raising taxes. Knowing our limitations and continuing to invest in ourselves will bring success. Thank you to both the chamber and to the legal and voters. Appreciate being here.
Thank you all for being here this evening. If elected, I pledge to provide the high level of public service that Salina residents deserve and know they can expect from me. I will show up to every meeting well-prepared and ready to work for the people I serve. I truly believe that successful community elect leaders who place the public interest above their own personal financial gain and other special interests. With the decline of the Salina Journal, sorry, Journal, as the watchdog over government, it is critical now more than ever that we elect ethical individuals with the ability to steer clear of conflicts of interest in order to preserve the public trust, provide true transparency, and guarantee an equal opportunity for all. I honor the confidence and trust that you have placed in me in the past, and I would appreciate your vote on November 5th. Thank you. Thank you.
Election Day is November 5th. Early voting has begun at the County Clerk's Office. Citizens in the City of Salina are voting on the Salina City Commission, USD 305 School Board members, Central Kansas Extension District Number Three Board members, and the Constitutional Amendment in regard to the census. Early voting is going on right now in the Selina County Clerk's Office, 300 West Add Street, Room 215, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. from now until November 1st. Saturday, November 2nd, from 10:00 to 2:00. Monday, November 4th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Voters can request a ballot by mail from now until October 29th. The League and the Chamber have been very pleased to co-host this candidate forum, and we want to thank the candidates for coming and sharing.
We got through it.
Thank you for getting time, people in there.